All right. Welcome to the March thirteenth meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Muskegon. We are waiting, I believe, on a few more folks, but let's do. Commissioners Simmons. Blake.
Here.
Montgomery Keast.
Here.
Ms. Aid. Keener.
Here.
Cypher. Willat Leroy.
Here.
Garan.
Here.
And Johnson. Okay, so we do have a quorum and we can continue. First, we'll do approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve the minutes is presented.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
All those in favor say nay, all those opposed say no?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and it looks like we have elections as the third item on the agenda today.
We already did that.
Sorry about that.
So, we've already moved through that, there has been a slight change. With that, so we have a series of public hearings on the agenda for today. Uh, the first item, uh, want to read through that and talk through, or does staff want to give an update first?
Of which item? The first item?
Okay, on public hearings?
Oh, we are asking to, uh, table this item, uh, so we can get a legal opinion, and we should have that soon.
Okay, can I get a motion to table?
I move to table this item until the appropriate time.
Support. Do roll call on that one?
Yes.
Okay, roll call. All right, Commissioner Garan.
Yes.
Willat Leroy.
Yes.
Keener.
Yep.
Montgomery Keast.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
So now we have item B, hearing case twenty twenty-five dash ten, request for a special use permit to operate a marijuana retailer with drive-through at five fifty-one Young Avenue.
Is there anybody here represent- representing that case? I think, uh, I did talk to the applicant about half hour ago, hour ago, they said they were gonna be here, maybe we can.
And move it later in the agenda?
Yeah.
We need to, we'll reorder the agenda based on them not being present currently. Don't think we need a motion for that. Next item is hearing case twenty twenty-five dash eleven, staff initiated request to rezone the following properties from neighborhood residential R to Form Base Code Neighborhood Edge. Seventeen sixty-nine, seventeen thirty-three, seventeen fifteen, seventeen sixty-six, seventeen fifty-two, seventeen thirty-six, seventeen twenty-four, seventeen twenty, seventeen fourteen, Bydler Street. Do I have them?
All right.
Go ahead.
So, this section of Bydler Street intersects with, with Lakeston and is comprised of many, uh, different types of buildings. A lot of them mixed use or retail, uh, in this small stretch, it can almost be looked at as an extension of the business district, and it was at one time. Uh, the issue with these buildings now is the, a lot of the mixed use buildings you see are non-conforming. Um, the businesses are only allowed in very limited capacity and they need a special use permit, and you're really only supposed to have, uh, one apartment unit in it. So, over the years, we've made some provisions where you can apply for special use permits and go through a long process here and at the city commission to try to just be able to use the building for what it was intended. So, we believe that we have the correct zoning designations now with the Form Base Code Neighborhood Edge, which fits these type of businesses and buildings, uh, perfectly because they allow for a wide array of uses. Uh, but they really kept the amount of density just by the size of the parcels, so it really can't be too large of a development. So, we think that this, uh, would be a really good fit. We had a focus group, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, and we invited people to a meeting and on Zoom, and it wasn't that well attended, but there was a few people and they were very interested with us moving forward. Um, they really couldn't see a downside, they asked what the downside was. Um, really for the owner, I don't think there is one. Um, it really brings their properties into conformity because now the businesses that are there or the multi-units in many cases are non-conforming. They're legally non-conforming, but they'd have issues, uh, rebuilding, which can lead to issues with financing and selling properties. Um, you could say that the, the neighbors around it may not like the density, but they've recently gone under an upzoning with our zoning reform and a lot more density as well. So, this really fits in very well, fits in with the master plan, especially our economic development section. Actually, all five of the, the points in that, uh, this initiative really supports. So, um, this is something the planning department feels strongly about, and, uh, the businesses that we did talk to seem to, uh, support it as well.
Okay, and so, can we scroll back up to the agenda item real quick? Okay, so as this is a hearing, um, forgive me, it's the first time up here doing this, just for sake of process, we don't need to do anything regarding motions first, we just need to let the.
Right.
Public, okay. Um, so the opportunity now for a public hearing, for anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this matter, please come to the podium, give us your name, address, and you have three minutes to provide your remarks. Standard timeframe for that. Let me go to, uh, if anybody calling in. Give me the phone number. All right, I'm not seeing anybody in the audience here who has an interest in coming forward, so we will open the phones to those from home who might like to participate. The phone number is two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one. We'll give you a few moments to call in.
While we're waiting, I'd also like to mention, um, you can see on the zoning map here, the property that's not filled in, we recently rezoned that one to Form Base Code Neighborhood Edge, so this would go along with the rest of that. That's kind of one of the reasons we were looking into this.
No calls as of now?
I will motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Few folks, so take your pick.
Yeah.
It was either Meierkeen.
Oh, you're talking about?
Support, yeah.
The motion after closing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need a motion to carry that forward?
I don't have it. The deliberation is, I got it. I move that the request to rezone seventeen sixty-nine, seventeen thirty-three, seventeen fifteen, seventeen sixty-six, seventeen fifty-two, seventeen thirty-two, seventeen twenty-four, seventeen twenty, and seventeen fourteen, Bydler Street, from neighborhood residential to Form Base Code Neighborhood Edge, be recommended to the city commission for approval.
I have a motion and a second, or I have any discussion?
Oops, seventeen thirty-two. And seventeen thirty-six. Oh, just seventeen thirty-six.
Also including seventeen thirty-six for the record.
Sorry about the numbers.
All, all numbers mentioned in the public hearing.
There we go. What's that deep breath?
Okay, you had some discussion yet?
Yes.
I'm really looking forward to, and thank staff for working on this, and for this change to go into Form Base Code. I see it as just a great opportunity for more housing and, um, for small businesses to be supported and bring in, you know, that kind of small business atmosphere that we love about Muskegon. So, it's like income and multiple different ways to help many of our citizens here, so I'm really looking forward to this being part of Form Base Code.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it as well, um, for the same reason. Um, you know, that's really what's missing in our neighborhoods, our gathering places, and this really facilitates that, so I'm, I'm proud of it.
Yeah, I think we have an opportunity to restore what many of us grew up with, whether it was the pharmacy on the corner, the shoe store, the Polish deli.
Yeah.
Um, you know, what, uh, things that were part of the fabric of life and when we rejiggered what we thought was appropriate for zoning, we outlawed everything that we grew up with. I think this also dovetails nicely with our attempts at the nodes for the, the, the commercial, uh, zones to restore that where appropriate, you know, throughout the city. Uh, but I, I'm, I'm really excited about this, you know, uh, as well, because I think that, uh, we can rejuvenate and actually begin using properties the way that, uh, they were built back at the turn of the last century and, um, and, uh, again, um, see that vitality of, of commerce and residential, so I'll be supporting this.
Who else? Okay, uh, roll call. Commissioners Johnson.
Yes.
Garan.
Yes.
Willat Leroy.
Yes.
Keener.
Yes.
Montgomery Keast.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Next. Scroll, I can't.
What was that?
Do the next.
Uh, we, the applicant is here, so.
Oh, okay.
She's thinking of scrolling the screen to the next item.
Do you want to go?
Oh, you're going back up to the previous, gotcha.
All right, so this time we're gonna go back in time, back to the initial, um, item on the agenda. So this is, uh, hearing case twenty twenty-five dash ten, request for a special use permit to operate a marijuana retailer with drive-through at five fifty-one Young Avenue.
Uh, so Green Craft LLC has operated, uh, Class C grow at this location since two thousand twenty-one. Uh, you can notice the angle of the building that is unique, uh, that is because of the location of the drain commissioner stormwater easement and drain that goes through the property. Um, they do not allow anything to be placed on top of the easement usually. Uh, there is a new drain commissioner, we asked that they reached out to them to talk about the, um, the drive-through boost that would be placed on there, they actually did respond, we have a letter for everyone. Um, and the new drain commissioner, uh, seems to be a little bit more flexible than ones in the past and has written a letter of support. Um, so, the temporary building issue that you've read in the staff report really would not be an issue now. Um, so what they plan on doing, uh, instead of having customers go inside of their retail marijuana store, they would have simply a drive-through, and they would make an addition onto their, uh, parking lot and come in through the street, which is really just a paper street now, but the engineering department would give them approval to, um, improve just about fifty feet of that to make it go into the entrance, uh, and then it'd be a one-way and there'd be three booths taking orders. Um, we initially had an issue with that because we don't allow temporary buildings, and we were under the impression that the drain commissioner would not allow permanent structures. Looks like that will not be an issue. Um, there are a couple other issues with the site, um, we like to see cleaned up, uh, maybe before approval, or at least before they open. Um, they do have a stormwater pond there, and they will need to amend their stormwater permit, and the engineering department, usually, you know, we, uh, we would approve contention upon them getting that. There could be concerns with this one, uh, just the way that we have seen that it was meant installed and the way it's going to be encroaching, uh, on that, where they're currently dumping their stormwater, that could be an issue. So we would like them to begin talks, uh, with the stormwater permit at the engineering department. Uh, and there are a couple of storage containers on site, uh, we don't allow those. Uh, the applicant has discussed some options of maybe turning those into buildings or making them permanent structures. Um, so, whether or not we want to table until that is removed or placed on a condition of approval, uh, ultimately, we would not be able to approve their marijuana permit with a violation though, so they would be held, uh, to that standard as well. We did notice everybody within five, uh, three hundred feet of the property. Uh, we did not hear any, um, concerns from anybody, uh, and this is in the marijuana, the original marijuana overlay district, which allows for all types of marijuana licenses.
Okay, at this time, we will have the public hearing on this item, if anybody in the audience would like to speak, or the applicants available, would like to participate? Well, how do you go first, sorry about that?
Hello? Hi, my name is Adam McCoslin, I'm the, uh, owner of Green Craft, we're at five five-one Young Avenue. Uh, as Mr. Franzak said, we are currently on the wholesale side where we grow, and, um, I don't know if you guys have been keeping up with it, but, uh, I always joke that I'm glad I did not install a window in my building, because I would have jumped out of it. The wholesale game is, uh, very tough, and so, uh, we would like to go into retail, so that way we can be, in a sense, farm to table, see direct, where consumers can come on in. We came up with the idea for what I call Phase One, is to simply do a drive-through. If it's successful, then maybe down the road, we'll take a look at the lot next door, or even on the same property building, more of a traditional storefront. Um, but I'm very excited about the drive-through, I talked to a lot of people, that may be teachers, lawyers in the medical field, and they have to send a friend or relative to the dispensaries, because they don't want to be seen in them, so the drive-through option, they think is, uh, very attractive. We're a small family-owned business, um, eleven people, seven of the people I will mention are female, which is, uh, turns out to be unique in the industry, I think it's a blessing, we have an amazing team. Um, so what we are trying to do is get all of our ducks in a row and be prepared to open in May. And so as I jump kind of through the different approval processes, I guess what I'm here today for is to see if we can get, um, content, or approval contingent on taking care of resolution of the shipping containers, rather, I, I'd like to use them in the future around the back of the building where they wouldn't be seen. So I'm gonna work with Safe Build and see if it's an option to consider that a permanent building. If not, we'll have to sell them and move them, and on the stormwater side, we'll definitely work with, uh, civil engineering to, uh, make sure we satisfy that. I will mention that originally the site plan was approved for three sections of buildings, about twenty-two thousand square feet. We have eliminated the second and the third building, that's no longer in the cards. So, if you take a look at the hardscape that we're adding, um, I think it will, we'll still be way under what was originally approved, but we'll go ahead and make sure we're compliant and, uh, up to code with that.
Thank you. Are we able to do discussion before hearing or hearing?
Questions to the applicant?
So, do we have any questions for the applicant from the commission?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, so, the, this picture of the booth is what you kind of have in mind?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm wondering about like the safety precaution for your staff, um, as well as for your customers, um, in regards to stuff, somebody just driving right into it, um, and how are you going to, kind of a two-part question, how are you gonna house marijuana safely in these small booths as well?
Excellent question. So, the order booth will be for ordering only, all product will be kept inside, and, well, Mike and, or whoever's controlling the, uh, the screen, could you go to that site plan with the booths? Yep, so, uh, people entrance there on the left, people will come through the left-hand side where it says entrance. Um, our idea is that we will have two order booths for customers that want to have an engagement or an interaction. The third booth, we're gonna call it the express lane, that'll be for customers that order and place their order online. Um, all that booth will simply be doing is collecting payment if needed and checking ID. They will then pull forward to, I don't know if you can zoom in, but there in the existing parking lot, it says pickup booth. What we'll basically do is, the cannabis will be stored inside the building, and we'll have a runner that will simply be inside, bagging it up, put the receipt on it, and then we'll take it out and out to the person's car. So on one way, we're kind of a curbside business, but on the other hand, I don't really want the employees to have to be out there in the heat of, uh, summer, in the downpour, or during the freezing, uh, parts of winter, so what we were intending to do is have a little pickup booth, so therefore it would follow as drive-through. Um, so as far as security, um, really all the product will be kept inside, and the only time product comes outside would just be whatever the customer's orders and it's handed to them. Um, we've kicked around the idea of, um, you know, probably having the runner potentially, uh, act also as as a security guard, you know, maybe be in a uniform and make it look more, uh,
But cash is still exchanging hands at the order booth.
Cash will still be kept at the order booth. So we'll have a policy where once we hit a certain threshold, whether it's five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars or something, we'll have somebody come out and collect it and bring the cash back inside into a safe. Um, I personally feel that if someone wants to try to rob us for five hundred dollars, just take it, you know, and leave us alone. You know, we're not looking to have any problems. If we really wanted, I guess, to get aggressive, we could take a look at like bulletproof glass or some type of additional security deterrent, but, um, I had concerns about the location of the property of both security concerns, and I've been there for three, I, I've owned the property now for five years, it's my second home. I have never, ever had a security concern there, the worst we ever have is sometimes the homeless sleeping on the, the property.
I would like to mention the, the curbside, uh, thing he brought up. So interesting enough, we have, uh, since COVID, uh, we allowed curbside, and then we actually codified it, so it's in the ordinance that you can do curbside without a special use permit, so, and this is something we discussed, because we weren't sure he'd be able to put the booths on there, uh, is if he did curbside, he could just go ahead and do it without any special approvals. Um, but for a, a drive-through, you would, but this is a very unique drive-through that almost feels like a curbside, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. My goal really is to get to the point where we open, where all of a sudden we don't get a surprise, where, you know, now it's gonna be considered a drive-through. I think you could make the argument that it's either one, um, I'd rather just treat it as a drive-through, um, and make sure we have the, uh, the committee's blessing. Um, I'm trying to think of any other security, I don't, I feel like I didn't answer your question good enough on how are we gonna be safe, because that's, uh, first and foremost, I mean, we're gonna have security cameras, there'll be two security cameras at the booth, one on the internal booth and one actually facing towards the customer. We'll have facial recognition, we'll have, uh, driver's license recognition, so if we have basically people on our naughty list, trouble list, you know, customers that have maybe been a problem in the past, um, you know, that would be, they'll be at the entrance, we'll have a security camera that will be able to flag license plates when they come in, so we'd be notified there's a potential problem. Um, and I always think the best way to deal with conflict is to, uh, de-escalate as quickly as possible.
And what are your hours of operation?
So right now, what I call Phase One, is we are taking a look at only being open on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I don't see a lot of traffic at the places on Mondays and Tuesdays, we're trying to keep costs down so we can be competitive in the market. So right now, we're taking a look at being open to nine to nine. Um, almost all the dispensaries in town close by eight, Grassy Knoll opens to midnight, and I drive home about eight, nine, ten o'clock usually after work, and I see a decent amount of traffic there, so we're gonna kind of judge the demand. Um, if we're successful, uh, you know, we'll, we'll be happy to employ more people and stay open, but I think for right now, we're just looking at nine to nine.
And then, um, regarding the drive-through situation, will you have any inside sales?
No, no, customers, clients or customers won't be allowed inside, we'll have parking spots off to the side where if someone wants to talk to a manager, you know, we can go out there and transaction with them.
How will you handle pedestrians who might be interested in purchase?
Excellent question, so, this isn't on the map, but on the express order booth, we're gonna put in a sidewalk from the fence, so that way anyone on a bike or anyone walking won't be in the actual drive-through lanes, there'll be a sidewalk, they can walk right on and up and place an order there, and we'll bring it out to them.
Do we typically, if considered a drive-through, allow pedestrian access to the drive-through window?
Uh, typically, no, I don't know what law that stems from, but I don't believe it is. I also don't see, uh, uh, sidewalk represented on the plan either, so that should ultimately be reflected, how one would get from the street to the property, and where, what that bike lane would look like, and if it's elevated or not, I think there's some missing information.
Do you have a plan that reflects those details?
Uh, it's not created, but I, with, I, I can. I can.
All right, go ahead, Jim.
Construction question, uh, just on the, on the booths themselves, this, this one in the picture looks pretty doggone temporary. Um, are they just movable, is?
No, they'll, I mean, it'll be on a, it'll be on a slab, um, and so it'll be bolted, it won't be moved, but in the case of the stormwater sewer needing to be accessed, which I think is, don't, I don't, if the stormwater system ever needs to be accessed, we'd be willing to simply move the booth with like a forklift and have to, uh, you know, bust up the foundation. That's a temporary solution, I don't know, Mike, did you conclude the second picture I sent you? There's one from the DNR, you know, like when you go to the campsites and you check on in.
I, I didn't, I didn't see that one.
Anyway, that, well, it will make, aesthetics will be important, so, you know, we don't want it to make it look like a, a ticket booth. Um, and the other thing I forgot to mention too, is that, um, the property is fully fenced in with a gate, as far as for after-hours security concerns.
I did notice when I went by, but it, the fence goes over your property and the neighbor's property, correct? To the west, and then it goes over the street too.
Uh, so you see where it says entrance?
Yeah.
There's a gate there.
But that is a public street, I don't think it's supposed to be gated.
Um, follow me, I'm like, I don't know, uh, I, I guess, is that something?
I just wasn't sure, I just was reminded of that.
So, the fence that runs on Temple, on the abandoned road, that fence was there before I bought the property.
That's what I was wondering.
There's no road right now, so.
It's a paper street.
Yeah, it's on paper perhaps, Temple Street, uh, kind of goes diagonally, uh, so that portion of Temple Street that's unpaved, it was never vacated, it's still technically platted.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so if you go down here, yeah, so was that gate already there?
No, so we, the, uh.
Yeah, that shouldn't be gated, so that should also be a set on approval, a condition is that we don't have the public street gated, even though it's not a street, there still shouldn't be a gate over it. But I don't know how that affects your operations, because you're gonna want it fenced in.
Yeah, we are.
Technically, that fence has got to move to the other.
Or they could pursue the process of seeking the vacation of that section of the road.
They could, but they'd also have to go through the process of replating it, which is very costly and time-consuming.
Because, yeah, right, once that, that, uh, temple ends at Young, the paved portion of Temple ends at Young, it, it's just, there's nothing, it's just all on private property.
Where does that go after?
Doesn't connect again at Delano Avenue, it just cuts across diagonally, and it looks like it actually stops halfway through the block from, um, Young to Delano, the paper street stops halfway through, same, unlike Walk, Walk Street goes all the way through, but again, that's also just on paper.
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at just a map, um, the Bing map, and it shows the platted road, um.
I believe the, I believe the paper road goes all the way through.
Does it?
Yeah.
I'll look at the GIS, because that will have a clear.
Uh, so there was previously a, okay.
If you go to the zoning map, it should show.
And so does, does wood trucking have a fence on their end of the property then?
I have that up, yep, zoning map.
Yes.
On their side of where that would be.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's all, it's fenced in all the way through.
I think Walk Street is the one that doesn't go through. That one had been vacated and replanted, I believe, but Temple does.
The map, the map shows walks going all the, the, the Bing map shows walks going all the way through, and Temple stopping halfway, um, through that block. The zoning map shows Temple's also kind of stopping, I don't see it continuing. But regardless, it's there, so whether it goes all the way through or it stops halfway through, it is there, and it is an issue. Um, and I, on the zoning map that, um, I'm looking at, it doesn't show walks at all, but I'm looking at the downtown FBC, let's see if the other zoning map shows, because we got a couple, a few different zoning maps on the city website. So let's see if this other one shows it.
Yeah, that's a note, I'd like to bring it later.
Different lane.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mike?
Yeah.
Um, most recent, recent titling, uh, when we turn that into a, uh, industrial park, would, uh, would any of that be up to date? Uh, but ultimately, will we not have to proceed and get this all cleared up so I know what we're talking about on these properties?
Yes, I believe it is a, a street, the, the zoning map is usually pretty accurate, and it shows it connecting to Delano. I'm pretty confident it's a street, I, I do believe Walks was vacated at one point to help wood trucking expand their operations, and they go over that easement, so, and I believe we looked at it with your other development, your, your other three buildings, we're gonna go right over that former easement, so that had all been worked out, but Temple Street hasn't been, but that's not the issue, the issue is that it's fenced in. It just shouldn't be fenced. But that's not the issue, the issue is that it's fenced in, it just shouldn't be fenced in.
Okay, so there appears to be a couple of issues at hand. The question is, is do we just carry on with the public hearing or determine whether we should table?
I, I'd appreciate more discussion with Public Works. Um, that the fencing, that's something that really didn't come up between us, but I don't know if they've noticed that.
I think there's still the.
I'm interested in seeing.
The pedestrian with the drive-through issue seems to be mostly regarding liability.
Well, I would also like to see how, how that functions because that seems very, like it could be a safety issue and I'd like to see it on paper.
I mean, I'd be happy to supply that if you look at the picture you guys are looking at, that red truck is mine. Basically, that's where the pedestrian booth would be and it would just be a straight sidewalk with a gate. That would open for the public.
Additionally, we've, you know, there's a preference here to have the temporary storage items resolved before.
Yeah, and the gate is not represented on the site plan and it, in all honesty, could have to move, it could have to move to the east. So that would have, and I don't know if there would be room for the drive then. It'd be helpful to see it on paper.
My question is, is what are the, the consequences of moving forward and needing to deny versus needing, just choosing to table until we have the appropriate information to move forward?
I believe since, you know, we've had the public hearing, it doesn't appear anybody's opposed to it. I don't think it deserves a denial in, or maybe we didn't have the public hearing yet. Never mind, okay, well, depending on that, if there were no issues, it's simply a site plan matter and tabling is usually appropriate until you figure that out.
Oh, you know, I got a couple of questions for the applicant. So thank you for giving some of the understanding insights that similar questions is. I'm a colleague here in terms of your, your operations and how it's going to function. Given that you are planning on having a person, well, let me back up. Had you considered as part of your drive-through operation, having the drive-through window being physically attached to your building? Such as you were to build the drive-through window in your building or an extension from your building to have a, a physical permanent structure to serve as the drive-through window? Had that been considered, that's the first question.
Uh, the exit, it does, so you have HVAC equipment, which would prevent a car from pulling right up next to the building. So the ideas we, that we always had is we were just walking out. And actually, one of the ideas that we are considering, I don't know if this would deal with you guys or it's, I thought it was more with the cannabis regulatory agency, is that, you know, the bank vault chute, we were talking about just having a chute that goes right to the pickup booth. So cannabis product goes from inside the building, it'll actually be up on the second story floor. Someone will drop it down the chute, it'll go right to the pickup booth and then that person would hand it to someone.
See the pneumatic tubing that would, okay, which you could potentially also do from your, your other cash, your, your payment windows too potentially. That's a little bit more involved and expensive if you wanted to add pneumatic tubing there. But.
We're actually, the other thing too, is I should mention for cost-wise, we're actually just going to do gravity.
Yeah, okay, well, with the, with the, yeah, for the distribution.
Because there's nothing they're going to be sending back to us, everything's going out.
Distribution, yeah. So given that you are, unless you do that, and you may have people running out the product. Had you considered just having designated parking spaces, they pull up and, you know, they bring the cannabis out. So doing purely curbside, essentially that regard. Because the only need for a special use permit, if I understand correctly, is just for the drive-through aspect of it. Because you're otherwise fully permitted per the overlay district there to have the type of marijuana operations that you want, retail in addition to the, to the grow operation. So had you considered just having designated parking spots, they park there and then they run out to the car with the product versus having a designated drive-up window for distribution?
Only, so yes, and again, I think you could argue either way that this is curbside or drive-through. I was trying to go with a more restrictive approach and get that approval. In our name, it's going to, and I'm not saying it's going to be green craft drive-through, but in our name, we're going to call it a drive-through. And you're going to be pulling up to a potential window. We can have it brought out 10 feet and handed to a person, just because of the weather. You know, it's, what about, it's freezing cold here, what, five months out of the year? And I just thought for the employee, for just employee comfort, when people aren't in line, they're just going to be sitting there. I thought it might just be easier to have a booth that way they're out of the elements. But if, if, if the answer is no, you're not allowed to have a drive-through, then we're going to go with curbside model. It's basically going to be the same operation, pre-order booth, you pull up, someone hands it to you.
Okay, I was just wondering, so I know you said that it'd be difficult to build a drive-through window from your existing building. But had you, because where you want to put the, the drive-up window or the drive-through window with the standalone building, separate from your main building, had you considered doing an enclosed extension of your physical building to that area? So again, for your, your employee comfort then, they don't have to go in the elements at all in that regard. And there's no product leaving the building except for to be handed immediately to the, the person buying it. I'm just wondering if that'd been contemplated.
We had, and the reason why I kind of ruled against it in phase one, to be very honest with you, you know, we lost a quarter of a million dollars last year. I'm trying to open this on a shoestring budget without putting out a lot of money. I'm at the end of my, the tanks are dry. So I'm trying to get an operation up and going without a lot of costs. And frankly, we're not on the beaten path. I'm concerned about how much traffic and customers are we going to get? And if we have to shut down the business, I don't want to have to go out and spend another 20 grand on blueprints. And who knows how much to build an addition off the building, rip up the existing concrete. It just seemed for me, it, phase one is I always just wanted to do the drive-through. We, I owned the lot next door with the trees and if the drive-through is successful, I could see us potentially down the road opening a, a typical walk-in storefront with a drive-through and parking and that type of stuff. But this is kind of just put my toe in the water and let's just see if we can even make a go of it.
Understandable. Any business wants to minimize their costs and try to maximize their returns? And I know the, the grow operation, well, actually the entire cannabis industry has been a, a challenge. So, and particularly from the, from the wholesale grow operations side, and it may not be getting more challenging as well, depending on the, the tax regulations coming, coming from Lansing. But, so I don't understand why you'd want to take this maybe incremental approach. Proof of concept, see if it does make sense and then you could invest more into a more permanent operation there, so. Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, really, my main, the reason why we had three booths, I know that if I pull up at someplace and I have to wait more than four or five minutes, I'm jumping out of that line. So we were trying to basically have it where in time a customer pulls up, they're serviced and can be gone within four to five minutes. So in other words, they, you know, that's why we did the three lanes. And then the way we have it staggered is that we'll be able, allowed to have, each lane will be able to have three cars within line without backing up anywhere close to the street and then they can pull forward. So, yeah, we're, we're trying to make it, we're not going to appeal to everyone if somebody wants to walk in and smell all the jars and have a conversation. That won't be us, we're going to be probably more geared towards someone like myself that is, wants quick, fast, got to get home with the family, that type of thing.
With, one more, may I have one more question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So in terms of the, the ordering, will they simply be paying at the order booth and they have to order online? Or will they be like deciding, oh, I want this strain or that strain and like, you know, the, essentially their concierge or whatnot, like helping them to identify, you know, product and type and strain and so on and so forth? Or will it be all done online and they're just either paying, paying in person and then picking it up or?
So we'll offer both. The intentions would be, order booth one and two would be more of a consultation. We've even kicked around the idea of saying like, if it's your first time here, go to lane one. And the idea is you might be there a little bit longer. But then the online folks would just jump right ahead to the express lane.
The express booth, okay.
And, you know, if this is a success and on Friday at seven o'clock, if there is a quite a rush flow of traffic, we could consider going to a Chick-fil-A model where some of could actually go out to the car line.
I was literally looking it up at the moment, I was like, how do I articulate the Chick-fil-A model?
Yeah, really, I'm stealing McDonald's and Chick-fil-A and trying to combine into one.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the insights.
All right, any other discussion from the commission? Okay, so the, the question remains whether it sounds like we want to continue with the public hearing and then we'll see where we decide after that. That's the consensus I'm getting, so we're going to go ahead and see if there's any folks from the audience who have any input questions would like to come forward. Please do so now.
Thank you.
Thank you. State your name, address, and you have three minutes to provide your remarks. Seeing none, so we will go to the phones. Again, the call-in number for the public hearing is two three one seven two four six seven two one. Give folks a few minutes to join the call. No calls coming in? Okay.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no.
Aye.
Okay, so at this point, we would need a motion?
Um, we should also do the exercise, actually, sets a special use permit.
Okay.
Well, should we only do that if we get a motion for considering it right now versus a motion to?
That's a good point.
Defer it?
All right.
So, it's the pleasure of the.
Motion they would like to bring forward.
I just have one, well, one additional question because it's been kind of iffy. In staff's mind, moving forward, what would be the most flexible and expeditious? Instead of trying to make stuff up in a motion or tabling it until you and the petitioner have had additional time to go over some of the items that have, you know, arose through, you know, the presentation tonight?
I, I do think we need to figure out if the fence needs to move and the gate. And I think that severely, could severely impact the drive-through and how that functions. I would also like to see the, the bike path and how that would look on the site plan and how one would get from the road to the booth and back out safely. But are you asking me? What I would like to see or how the motions should go?
The motion that's offered is basically to table, so.
And we can go with the motion or we can go with tabling until?
The motion is suggested actually to table.
Yes, until the site plan, until it's all reflected on the site plan and we can come back and, and look at it all. And I, and I do think the mayor made a good point that it would be hard to answer some of these questions in the exercise without knowing what the final site plan is going to look like.
I think it's a useful exercise to be able to understand the situation a little bit more in depth, so.
And if I would have seen the tabling on my little screen here and here, because I can't see very well.
Okay, do I have anybody interested in making the motion given today?
I move at the request for a special use permit to operate a mayor on a retailer with a drive-through at five five one Young Avenue. Be tabled until staff's recommendations have been met.
Support.
All right, we have a roll call to that? Commissioners Blake? Montgomery Keast? Keener?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Call around?
Yes.
Ann Johnson?
Yes.
Just get ahold of me, I think we're pretty close, so we probably be right back here next month.
Thank you for joining us today.
I just, I just want to make a little comment if I could. If, if you could take a look at the security piece a little bit closer, that would be really appreciated when you bring it back. Really concerned about your staff being out there or if they have to run in from the restroom or coffee breaks or, you know, break period. It's, they're going to be far away from the building and that really worries me, so please try and address that with some concrete answers before you come back. Thank you.
Thank you, we have a next item on the agenda. Hearing case 2025-11, staff initiated, oh, wrong one. No worries, hearing case 2025-12, staff initiated request to rezon the properties at 1201 and 1147 Third Street and 236 Monroe Avenue from Convenience and Compass and Business B2 to Form Based Code Main Street FPCMS.
So the Midtown area of downtown was rezoned, rezoned to Form Based Code initially in 2015. And this just included Third Street, it did not include the urban residential. So as all the properties, the businesses you see on Third Street were zoned for Main Street. At the time, it was a pretty new thing, Form Based Code. We were doing a lot of education, we really wanted to make sure we did it right the first time, so we reached out to everybody. There was a couple of properties that were a little hesitant at the time. And the one you can see here at 1201 Third Street, the vacant lot, they, same ownership as the brick building across the street. But at the time, some of you may know the Pierce Brothers, they owned the, the building. And they were going to do a car lot there and I believe they did it for about a year. And they had a PUD to do that. So at the time, they didn't want to move forward with the rezoning because Form Based Code kind of is, would not recommend for that type of use. And the other two properties, I, I really can't identify why they weren't included. One is the parking lots of the building on the corner with a mural. And the other is a very narrow lot in between that and where the townhomes that the city built went in. All three of these lots would be considered non-conforming and unbuildable under the B2 zoning. So we just feel it'd be appropriate to zone it with the rest of the properties in the area would be, which would be for Main Street. We did hold a focus group for these properties and the properties to the next case. And we did hear from the vacant parking lot at 1201 Third Street and they were fully supportive. But we were unable to get ahold of the other properties. But like I said, now you can't, right now, you really can't do anything with the properties other than the parking lot that's grandfathered in.
Okay, so this is a staff-initiated request.
Yes.
And so therefore, that was the update from you. We can go ahead to a public hearing on the matter? Anybody in the audience have input on this item? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address, you have three minutes to provide your remarks.
Hey, I'm Dave Whynot, I live at 235 Monroe Ave, directly across the street from 236 and the new Midtown Two condominiums. I enjoy living downtown, it's great. While I agree with the Third Street going to Form Based Main Street utilities, I think the Monroe Ave should go to Neighborhood's Edge because it's not on the Main Street. It's on Monroe Ave with the entrance in and out would be. I think this would also give the owner more flexibility, but it would also keep the setbacks allowable, still buildable, but the setbacks to meet the surrounding homes that are on Monroe Street. Monroe Street ends at Third and comes back into Neighborhoods, which are. And the pictures in the, that we're taking from the Google are not reflective, they don't show the condominiums. They don't show like the trees that are there in the pictures, aren't there anymore, they're not up to date.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Phil McPherson, I'm at 243 Monroe Avenue. I'm the HOA president and I represent the 10 residents that live in the condos association. I'm in agreement with Dave, 236 Monroe Avenue. I, I guess I would like to know why, what's the purpose of the rezoning if it's not buildable? What is the proposal for that piece of property? Our concern is if they expand a parking lot in that piece of property, it is extremely close to the condos. There would be obviously, you know, lights in and out of people's homes right there. Also concerned with cars being that close to residential neighborhood or residential. There was no proposal of what the property was going to be used for in the information provided. So I think that, you know, I'm not opposed to the other two pieces being rezoned, I am opposed to 236 being rezoned. As, unless there's some more information to be proposed to the neighborhood.
Thank you for your remarks. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak on this issue? If not, we'll go to the phones, two three one seven two four six seven two one. Give folks a few minutes to call in, about two minutes. No calls so far?
And I'll keep up with it and move to close the public hearing.
Oh, hold on. No, sorry, that was my turn.
Wow, that's a funny phone.
You were saying.
Yes, move to close the public hearing, second.
Okay. And so.
I'm good at that today.
Do we have any discussion on the? Do we have any discussion on the item for us?
Uh, we have to put up a motion and then discuss.
We want to put up a motion, okay. It's a good plan.
Alright, I'll get it. I move that their request to rezon the properties at twelve oh one, eleven forty-seven Third Street? And two thirty-six Monroe Avenue from Convenience and Comparison Business to Form Based Code? Main Street be recommended to the City Commission for approval, second. Alright.
Okay, now, is there any discussion amongst commissioners? Go ahead.
Mike, can you refresh yourself and I know it's, this is, we're gonna be a really long question, but I think it's important to kind of talk maybe a little bit about Form Based Code? And with the understanding of what kind of properties, I don't know if you wanna say aren't? Able to put on it or able to put on that piece of property.
Uh, you're really limited, no matter what the zoning is, um, our reasoning for going to Main Street was because, uh, for one, the parking lot that's there is attached to a Main Street property. Actually, that property has two different zoning, so that's the same property there on the corner. So, we're just asking to bring that into, to the rest of the property.
Right.
Um, I do think they made a really good point about the other property, um. I do not agree that it should be Neighborhood Edge because I believe that would be a spot zone. I think we had one little sliver of a type of property. And I also don't know, potentially, you could find a building that's allowed in that district that allows it. But I think if we were gonna have it different than Main Street, it probably makes it more sense to be like the condos next to it that are urban residential. That makes a lot of sense, so I think they made a really good point. As far as the other one, I think it should just go with the rest of the property because it's already zoned Main Street.
Well, what are we gonna do now? Well, shut the table, including it all, make things complicated?
Well, that we could, we could move for a portion of the motion.
And that would prevent a parking lot expanding there, which maybe the business district would like, but I bet the people that live next door would not like that.
The supporter, uh, concurs.
Do you concur that she can retract her motion?
I'm sorry?
She'd like to retract her motion.
Oh, you concur? I'm fine with that. Great, let's do that and start over, maybe.
Never happened, may I have a motion then?
Alright, which one, Mike, what do you want me to say here?
I would take out that lot behind the parking lot, which is? Uh, that would be the Monroe Avenue address.
Two thirty-six Monroe.
Alright, so, thank you. I move that the request to rezon the properties at twelve oh one and eleven forty-seven Third Street? Um, from Convenience and Comparison Business to Form Based Code Main Street be recommended to the City Commission for approval, how's that?
To board.
Does that work? Thank you.
Alright, any further discussion on that motion?
She hit it.
Okay, I'll take a roll call.
Alright, Commissioners Blake?
Yes.
Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Keener?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Gollroun?
Yes.
Anne Johnson?
Yes.
Alright, moving right along.
No question.
Another question.
Uh, for, um, our planning manager, so in the event that we did want to, uh, rezone two thirty-six Monroe and neighborhood, uh, or urban residential, um.
I plan on bringing that forward. Was that, I, I, I think I should bring that forward probably next month.
Okay, so you would need to reissue a notice saying that there's an intent to rezonate urban residential, okay, gotcha, okay.
New plan, new process. Alright, so we have hearing case twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, staff initiated request to rezon the properties at eleven forty-eight Fourth Street? Three eighteen Houston Avenue from Limited Business B one and three fifty Houston Avenue from High Density Multiple Family Residential? R M three to Form Based Code Neighborhood Core F B C N C.
So, uh, after we rezoned the Midtown Business District in two thousand fifteen to Main Street, uh, we spent a couple of years, um, talking with the neighborhood and, uh, a couple of unsuccessful rezonings, but then ultimately, we were able to rezon most of the Nelson neighborhood? Uh, to urban residential around two thousand seventeen and we left these three properties off of it because, um, these were, these weren't the properties going from R one to urban residential. They were gonna be higher density some, to some other type of higher density, so really, really didn't wanna muddy the waters with those discussions. Uh, and again, it was still a, a very new thing and the two house-looking structures that hu- um, house businesses on Fourth Street in Houston? They could be defined as a small multiplex building, but at the time, small multiplex was not allowed in our, or urban residential districts. We had to later amend that in, so that's one of the reasons we did not, uh, request the rezoning at that time. Uh, as far as the Nelson place, uh, we've never really been successful in getting ahold of anyone, we did hold a focus group for these properties as well. Uh, we did not get any attendance at that, but they, they were notified and they were again notified during the public hearing process with, so, as well as everybody within three hundred feet. We did not hear from anybody, uh, during that time. Uh, but as far as the Nelson place, the zoning that we are going for, the Neighborhood Core, uh, would allow the type of building that they have now? It also would allow for mixed use if that's something they ever considered in the future, which I've not talked to them about. But, uh, they would retain all the rights they have now and even, uh, have possibilities for other uses as well. Whereas the R M three is really limited, um, and since this isn't our downtown area and we're looking for walkability? And different types of uses that potentially could be, um, a very good addition someday if they chose to do so.
Alright, thank you for that. Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? So, please come to the podium, state your name and address, you have three minutes to provide your remarks. I am not seeing any interest at this time, in that reason, we'll go to the phones, two three one seven two four six seven two one. Give you folks a few minutes to call in.
I wanna PBS call in.
I'd be good at that though.
You're doing perfect.
Thanks. Nobody on the line yet? Go for it, Jill.
I'm gonna keep my track record going, I'm moved to close the public hearing, second.
Oh, you got in there, good deal. Favor say aye?
Aye.
No. Okay, so then do we have any discussion from the commission on this item?
I have one question, um, the building on the right, what is that current, uh, currently operate is now?
It's like a multi-office.
Okay, and the other one was like a?
A office in there.
Twelve of them are, yeah, one's harbor psychological.
Okay.
The other one, I think, is an attorney's office.
Yeah, there's a few different o- office types uses in them.
To me, it seems very neighborhood, um, note-ish, you know, we, we've been talking about these types of businesses and. In my experience, I, I worked on Third and Houston for a long time, uh, never had any issues with those spaces? Or folks, you know, seeming too crowded or anything based on those, those buildings, Nelson Place seems to keep themselves in pretty good shape, so. Minus some recent issues, but. Any other discussion?
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Um, I move to rezon the properties eleven forty-eight Fourth Street, three eighteen Houston Avenue from Limited Business? And three fifty Houston Avenue from High Density Multiple Family Residential to Form Based Code Neighborhood Core.
Second.
All the roll call?
No more discussion.
Commissioners Johnson?
Yes.
Gollroun?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Keener?
Yes.
Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
What else we got?
We've got punches. You guys really hit us with the punch. I almost fell over when I saw the last, it was like, oh my god, seriously, guys?
Alright, hearing case twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, staff initiated request to rezon the following properties from two-family residential R T to Form Based Code Neighborhood Edge F B C N E. Here we go, four twenty-nine, four thirty-three, four fifty-one, four sixty-one, four seventy-seven, four eighty-five, four ninety-one, five oh one, five oh seven, five thirteen, five twenty-one? And five twenty-seven East Apple Avenue and a ten twenty-two Williams Street.
So, we have about seventy properties throughout the city's zoned R T, so there's really not that many. Uh, unfortunately, the way that the ordinance has always been written, most of these are considered non-buildable. Um, although it appears it was written in to allow some more density. Uh, the way the minimum lot standards were written does not promote density, you have to have at least seventy-five foot of width at the street for a duplex. So, that really does not do much in terms of density and it also is creating these non-conformities for all of the property owners. So, we now have the Form Based Code Urban Residential, um, designation, which now with zoning reform allows for single-family duplexes? Uh, accessory dwelling units and if you have an alley, possibly a triplex if you have a big enough lot. So, those lo- those zones are now allow more density than our R T does. And they are correctly written, so you can do a duplex on a forty-foot wide lot instead of a seventy-five-foot wide lot. So, we'd also mentally like to get rid of this zoning designation, it really doesn't appear useful anymore. So, the first step would be to rezon the properties, most of the properties we're requesting to zone to urban residential. These ones, we're requesting to go a little denser with Neighborhood Edge because they are adjacent to a business district and there's an alley behind them. I'd like to point out that there are no proposed developments at this site, this is a statinified request. Uh, just to try to bring the zoning ordinance up to date with the, um, the master plan recommendations, which we believe, uh, uh, this does follow the master plan about, um, strengthening your business corridors, uh, and bringing density around that. So, whether or not this was a mixed-use development, uh, more density or commercial, uh, it could really help this business corridor in the future.
Thank you for that.
We did hold a focus group too, um, with the seventy properties, a few participants, uh, who all agreed to move forward.
Anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to this issue, please come forward. Seeing none, going to the phone, two three one seven two four six seven two one. A few moments to call in. Nobody, okay, go for it.
Yeah, okay, I moved to close the public hearing.
To support it, support?
Okay, moving support to close.
One more time.
Moving support to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye, no, or those opposed say no?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not doing all those numbers.
I moved the request to rezon five twenty-nine, four thirty-three, four fifty-one, four sixty-one, four seventy-seven, four eighty-five, four ninety-one, five zero one, five zero seven? Five one three, five two one, five two seven, East Apple Avenue and ten twenty-two Williams Street from two-family residential to Form Based Code Neighborhood Edge be recommended to the City Commission for approval.
Support. Good job.
Okay, um, so now, do we have any discussion from the commission?
No, I, I, I like this as well, I think it's a really great idea, um, and we were talking about it with the other proposal before. It's returning them back to what they should be, um, having community spots in the neighborhoods. Um, all kinds of choices and things that they can build there, I, I think it's wonderful, so I'm, I'm in full support of this.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Blake?
Yes.
Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Keener?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Gollroun?
Yes.
Anne Johnson?
Yes.
I am so not doing the next one.
Sorry about the next one.
I'll do it. You're gonna do it, that's me who's gonna do the next one.
Hearing case twenty twenty-five dash one five, staff initiated request to rezon the following properties from two-family residential R T to neighborhood residential R? Four ten, four twenty, four twenty-eight, four thirty-eight, four forty-eight, four fifty-six, four sixty-six, four seventy-eight, five oh eight, five twenty-four, five twenty-eight, five thirty, five thirty-two, five fifty-eight, five sixty-two, five sixty-eight, five eighty, five eighty-six, five ninety-two? Six hundred Adams Avenue, two seventy-five Marshall Street, four sixty-two, four seventy-eight, four ninety-four, five oh eight, five twenty-four, five forty, five fifty-six, five sixty-eight, five ninety-four? South Quarterline Road, eleven fifty, eleven sixty, eleven sixty-eight, eleven ninety-two, twelve oh six Ambrosia Street? Three seventy, three seventy-six, three eighty-four, three ninety Catherine Avenue, eleven seventy-four, eleven eighty-five, eleven ninety-one Wood Street? Three fifty-three, three fifty-seven, three sixty-one, three sixty-nine East Isabella Avenue, eleven thirteen, eleven nineteen Sophia Street? Three ninety-six, four twenty-two, four twenty-eight, four thirty-eight Michelofflin Avenue? Four sixty-three Catawba Avenue, five fifty-seven McLaren Street, twenty-four oh seven Barclay Street, eleven seventeen Delaware Avenue and nine fifty-five West Laketon Avenue.
Get the chairman out there.
Okay, uh, if anybody in the audience would like to speak to these properties, please come forward.
Let me just note, Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, uh, so these are the rest of the properties, um. And, um, none of these have an alley, so we did not propose them for urban residential? Because under urban residential, if you have an alley, you could get a quadplex, so that seemed like something to look into. However, none of these do, uh, but again, most of these will be brought into conformity, which will help out a lot of people, um. Yeah, there's no projects proposed right now, but I believe there are some vacant lots, so potentially, we could see some duplexes, uh, being built on some of these vacant lots with, right now, they would just be considered unbuildable.
Did you do a focus group on this one too?
We did, and, uh, it was along with the other one, we talked to all the R T properties, um. Again, not a ton of people, I don't know, five to seven groups of people probably showed up, um, out of all the seventy properties or, or we talked to on the phone. Sometimes people call in before the meeting and we're actually talked, able to talk to them one-on-one and they get their info before even coming to the meeting, and we don't mind doing that either. So, everyone we talked to was supportive, doesn't really seem to be a, a downside.
Very good.
As mentioned before, if anybody would like to come forward and discuss this issue, please do so now. Seeing none, we'll go to the phones, two three one seven two four sixty-seven twenty-one.
I'll move to close the public hearing, I'm sure that's set it right.
I will second to close the public hearing.
You could probably just say as proposed.
Yeah.
Those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Okay.
Cause they're gonna say we can do as presented, so.
Um, the following proposed motion is, is as presented with all of those numbers. Um, be approved to the City Commission for approval.
Second.
And any discussion amongst the commission?
Ju- just a comment, I mean, th- th- this is the most rational thing to do, so we can get rid of these orphan lots that through weird definitions through the decades have left them unbuildable? And, uh, useless and now potentially, we can get use out of them and, uh, uh, welcome, uh, new neighbors into the, uh, city.
I second that, and also, I think it will bring some liveliness to some of the neighborhoods, cause some of those neighborhoods look really weird with all of those blank spaces and stuff.
Yes, there's a lot of them too.
Like it's going bald in places, and, yeah, I'm looking forward to. People submitting bids to build.
We get pretty creative too, so it's nice to be a mosquito resident, just we can get really, really creative. And it's like, I don't know if that's allowed, but let's check.
Check.
Right.
Alright, uh, roll call?
Commissioners Johnson?
Yes.
Gollroun?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Keener?
Yes.
Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Cute, and then we have a public comment section aside of that, okay, so. Last, next item of business is new business, do we have any new business? No new business? No new business. Old business? Do we have any old business?
Well, maybe under new business, we should talk about the special meeting.
Okay, let's do that.
And uh that'll be on the twenty-seventh. We're looking at making a small amendment to the ordinance to require that for PUDs. Um the zoning administrator would have to sign off on it before any building premise would get issued.
Okay, and as of now, we're, we've got enough folks signed up for that meeting.
It looks like we are, but if everybody could please remember to confirm.
I sent the agenda out today. I'll be there. You're not there? I'm coming, yeah.
I'll send you a postcard.
Oh, thanks, I like those. Okay, good. Okay, and so then we have um other, I'm not sure what other is, but yes.
You'll find out, cause I got other for you. Um I just wanna let everyone know because it's about to kick off right now. It is five ten. Um but at five thirty to seven o'clock at the US Cafe at twenty-three hundred Maffet Street in Muskegon Heights. Uh there will be a community focus group. This is the first meeting with regard to um Shoreline Trails and Greenways um development. Um and so the city of Muskegon is um a partner and uh helping to fund um this regional planning. Um in concert with the West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission um and Muskegon County. Um and so uh Progressive AE is helping to do this planning and engagement. Um as you may recall, in our Master Land Use Plan that we adopted um in late twenty twenty-three. It did call for um looking at developing a greenway corridor along Ryerson Creek. And so as part of funding this, um something that emphasized was like was happy to fund this and support this and get involved as long as it includes Ryerson Creek. And ties into our Master Land Use Plan. And so it is a greater Muskegon, so it's a regional greenway trail system. Um but the planning um will include looking at Ryerson Creek um and a greenway corridor being developed there. In concert with this wider regional trails and greenway system. Um so you are invited and join the focus group discussion. On the Shoreline Trails and Greenways uh uh plan. It's an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas at the early stages of the project. Uh your perspective is valued, so let's build a better trail system together. Um there will be additional opportunities in the future. This is the first one. Um again, that's at the US Cafe, twenty-three hundred Maffet Street, Muskegon Heights, five thirty to seven o'clock tonight, Thursday, March thirteenth.
Twenty minutes.
That's where I'm running to right after this.
Alright, well, yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it's cool, isn't it?
With the additional information as it comes in, cause I know that on here it disappears and there's a lot. But perhaps if you get additional dates or whatnot, you could filter that information to come, you know, to to all of us.
Yep, I just got an email today, so I'll forward that email to the planning department about future um the future dates. I think the dates that they shared with me today are kind of tentative. They're not certain, but we can at least share it internally um with our with our planning team, uh so it's on everyone's radar.
Okay, thank you.
I guess while we're in the other category of public announcements, just because it's also sometimes a planning-related item, we have a convention coming to town. April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, the Michigan Lakes and Streams Association, so that might interest folks as well, if anybody wants to plan for that.
Especially in this political atmosphere. I think it's important that we go.
Um I actually signed everyone up for the citizen planner.
Okay.
Coming up, we have twenty people signed up between the city and others.
Oh, wonderful.
Um we do have one more open position to fill, if you know anyone interested at the city that would like to do that. Um so that's all ready to go for.
So we are all signed up by default, is what you're saying?
Um those that requested.
Okay.
Was that, um were you able to zoom in to those or if you have?
I don't think you can zoom into them. Yeah, it's, you'll have to check your schedules. If you can't make it, it's no big deal, but it's it's a good. And if you can't make them all, sometimes it's still good to go, especially if we're getting a grant to go. It's uh, they're educational and some. Some of the ones might not interest you, no?
Freshen my memory on the the schedule. Starts in April going through May.
Seventeenth, twenty-fourth of April, the first and eighth of May.
Alright, that's what, six weeks?
It's always on the.
Days?
It's always on the same day.
On which day are we?
We're gathering and what's.
It's one day a week.
One day? No.
Okay, I thought it was the same day. I'll check the, I'll check my.
And I'll make as many as I can.
Okay, we do have public comments. If anybody would like to make general public comment to the planning commission, now is your chance. Anybody in the audience? Seeing none.
I'll move to a turn.
We are going to the phones for public comment. Two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one.
Ready to learn, guys. You'll like it. It's really good, yeah. Did the one down in Ottawa County a long time ago. It was really good.
They have a lot of good resources, too.
Yeah.
Okay, can I move to a turn now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move to a turn.
I agree. I mean second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.